All right, good evening, everybody. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Joe, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to our February 24th Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just as all.
Thank you. Just a couple of announcements, I'll start, and then if you, anyone else has any to add, that'd be great. The Assessor's Office has asked me to remind everybody that all paperwork for property tax exemptions are due by March 1st. We haven't gotten a lot in this year. That includes STAR, senior veterans wholly exempt in agriculture, so get your exemptions into the Assessor's Office before March 1st. The former Killen, the Red Wing Mines property, has been getting a lot of press lately. I've been getting email after email. So, I wanted to say that the public hearing will continue at the Planning Board's Monday meeting at 6:45. So, thank you, everyone who wrote to express your concerns. Thank you for that. We did meet with two people today. We're going to appoint some new committee members, but we're still looking for people. We need another member for the Board of Assessment Review. We need people for the Web Committee. We need an Ethics Member. We need an alternate for Panda. We need people for our Rec Committees, Web and Tech. Anything else, guys?
Well, I think we need for Open Space and Affordable Housing members.
So, sign up. Get your volunteer applications in. We have hired the Auditor to go through the 2013 end-of-year accounts, and that audit is going to take place March 6th, 7th, and 8th here in Town Hall of everything we discussed, so we'll be releasing that at our next meeting. Anybody else have any announcements?
The only one I have is the ice skating rink has been closed because of the temperature going up. As soon as ice freezes again, we'll open up the gate and even back in.
Is it, is it, is it, uh, snow-free?
It's snow-free, but it's, it's wet.
I guess we should also give another shout-out of thanks to the Highway Department and our Maintenance Department. We've had a couple of more really heavy snowstorms and had another really bad day. You'll remember about a 25-hour day, I think. So, thanks to the Highway Department and Bob Fitzpatrick. We do have two public hearings, but I should do some housekeeping first because I think we have 10 more minutes. John, 7 o'clock, right? Okay, so let's go on to, we could do Committee and Liaison Reports. I believe there aren't any Committees here, but Liaison Reports. Anybody want to go? I'll talk briefly about the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association meetings that I attend monthly. There's a little dismay and concern over the repeal of the home heating tax that happened on the county. It happened in the last budget cycle and was passed for the budget. It goes into effect March 1st. The county repeal means that we will be having a 3.7% tax on all home heating, you know, oil, liquid propane, propane, everything. So, the county is saying that this is for unfunded mandates from the state, but we are one of only two counties in the state to repeal this exemption. So, I think we, you know, might put a resolution together to, to let the county know we're not happy about it, and you should too, if, if you feel like it. Also, the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association is following closely the proposal for the Monster Power Lines from upstate. One of theirs, four or five different proposals on the table. One goes right through east of us, Myland Clinton. It will affect our neighbors. It could be some eminent domain and loss of property, but even worse than that, if it could get worse, is that this new proposal will also carry a tax for us. 10% on residential electricity and 15% on all commercial. We get to pay for this project as well as host it. So, we're following that, and the county has drafted a resolution to express their dismay, and we will probably do the same. Anybody else? Okay, should we approve some resolutions before our public hearing? Resolution 2014-073 approving our preliminary accounts payable abstracts in the amount of $9,691.23. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number two, it's our resolution 2014-074 approving preliminary accounts payable abstracts 2C-V22 through V263 in the amount of $52,893.84. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to point out that in here includes $1,000 for the Quipman House Resource Center, and I'm not sure, it's $1,000 for perennial bed maintenance. Traditionally, we have paid for this, though we are not supposed to do it. We looked at the lease with the Quipman House Resource, and with the Winnicky easement, we're supposed to do mowing, brush hogging, and tree maintenance. I've pulled it out. We can amend this if you like. If we approve the abstract as-is, we're going to pay it. I would like to see us look into it and have a discussion with the Quipman House.
Right, I think the board, previous board this proposal came up, and we decided we were not funded, so...
Well, we got a, we did get an invoice. There wasn't an open P.O., but we have an invoice.
No, no, I understand that, but I think when the proposal came up, we decided we were not going to fund it. So, not quite sure why the work was done on our dime.
I'd like to make a, a motion, we have an open motion, but I'd like to make a motion to revise the resolution and the amount of $51,893.84 to hold this invoice for the maintenance aside while we discuss it now, and you'll reach out. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we've, we've reduced that, John, to take out that one abstract. We've amended it. Now, we vote to pass it? Okay, can I, I have the motion in front of us with the amended resolution for 51. Second?
You don't need to vote on a second.
Just vote on it? Can we vote on the motion on the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution, item number three, resolution 2014-075 approving capital projects abstracts for $693.90 and $5,090.
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Joe? Good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. More minutes. Item number four, resolution 2014-076 approving our budget transfers and amendments.
Motion.
Second? Any discussion?
My understanding is that these are 2014 budget, not the 2013 budget, these transfers.
I believe so.
I thought they were 2013.
Remember, we're supposed to close our books at the end of February on 2013.
Right, I think these are 2013.
These are 2013 transfers.
Yeah, we wouldn't be transferring so early in the year.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's fine, you know, we're not talking about big amounts yet.
No, it's, it's less than $2,000.
Yeah, and that's zero.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 20, this is item number five, 2014-077, it's approving the adjusted urban area boundaries. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second. But could you explain it?
I will, any discussion? I will explain it, yeah. Every 10 years with the census, the Department of Transportation looks at our roads, and they either decide to classify them differently or let them remain the same. They forward a map to us, to the mayor and the supervisor, and we approve it. Kathy and I, the Highway Superintendent and I actually looked at this and reached out to them and got them to extend it. If you look at the map, it used to end just north of the train station, but we got it to go down to Kelly Road. And what this does is it makes these roads that are in this urban area, and it's based on population and proximity to other transportation hubs. It makes them eligible for FEMA and different levels of aid. So, this could potentially help this area right near the train station with flood mitigation, stormwater drainage, or disaster relief, and it makes it FEMA-eligible.
Yeah, it's not just about FEMA. It's about federal funding. What it basically does by changing the boundary, by changing the boundary and extending that out, it changes one road, which would be Charles Street, from a Class 9 to a Class 8, which would make that road eligible for federal funding should something arise where we would want to apply for the federal funding. At least then now it would be eligible. At the moment, all of our roads within the town of Rhinebeck are Class 9 function roads. This is a way to at least get this road now to a Class 8, which opens up down the road its eligibility, as I said, should something arise. This doesn't mean that there is something that works. It's just something that we're looking at proactively going forward, you know, in case there was something that would affect us down the road. And it only affects Charles Street at this point. We'll have to change all of those designations because they're done by census tracts in order to get Charles Street's designation changed. And the reason that Charles Street is the only one that becomes affected is because of the classification as a collector, because it immediately adjoins a state road.
When I was reading about this, they said they normally include things that generate traffic, and they said parks are a good example.
They didn't say parks. They said other transportation hubs.
The one I read said parks. So, today.
Where, the one you read?
Today.
Where, on the?
On the, the websites that define this program.
Well, the whole of the, it also has to have population and feed into state roads, I believe. There's several criteria. The only boundary that's changed is this, south of the train station, the whole of the village is in it. That remains the same. We haven't had that much of a population shift.
The only extension on the map, and Elizabeth and I both spoke with the state representatives and also with county planning representatives as well, to try to make sure, to see what the thought was, the only change is the extension, which would now include a portion of Rhine Cliff. There's no other boundary change. All of the village, all of the other town down Rhine Cliff Road, all of that was already included. This is a small extension, and again, the only change, the only impact that that change has is to change the classification of one road. There's nothing else. Yes. There's nothing else on there. I think, if you're talking about a park, Bruce, you're probably talking about, since Thompson-Mazarello is already within there, you're talking about Stone Church, but that's not.
No, I'm not. I'm talking about Thompson-Mazarello.
It's all within there, anyway.
I want to make sure it is.
It's in there.
The whole thing.
It was ancient originally, it's in there with the extension.
Right here. Here's the, it's right, is it right there?
Yeah. No, this is, this is where Kathy lives. It would be over here.
I think you're referring to the gardens, correct?
Yeah, it's actually not all in it, Kathy. It's only in the town, you know, the village portion. The town portion is not in it. Here's Straver Lane.
The, let me look at the extension.
Well, all I would ask is because of the funding and the purpose of it...
You want us to go back to them and see if they'll include it?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
No, I'm sorry, the, the green, the, that, the green, the green line, that's, that's everything that's in it. That's the extension.
Right. Thompson-Mazarello Park is right here. It's worth another call to see if they'll put it in.
Hate to miss out on, it's up to the fight.
Well, we'll look at that map, that's the...
Is there another road that would be included?
There is not another town road in the area that would be included, anyway, because it's a state road.
But that, that road is going to be extended down, and it won't be in this.
It probably won't, it probably wouldn't be included, anyway, though, because of its classification.
And it's not built yet, but...
It's not a collector, yeah, it's not a collector road. It was the, again, the, the Charles Street characteristics that contributed to this were, you know, we wanted it adjacent to a state road, so it was considered a collector at its proximity because it was really adjacent to the downtown parking facility, the train station, a commuter park.
That was my understanding when we spoke. I'm happy to call again, but we should get approval for this if they say no.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but as long as you try.
Yeah. Spoken to them several times, it's no problem. Any further discussion? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I guess we can, let me just... Okay, it's 7 o'clock. Let us go back and open our first public hearing. We have two tonight for the Assessor's Office. We have a public hearing that's still open. We are looking at the possibility of changing the structure of the Assessor's Office. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
What do we vote on?
We're not, we're just, yeah, we're, yeah, just to continue the public hearing.
Yeah.
It's open.
Yeah.
Anybody here, I'm sure there are a lot of people who'd like to comment?
Meg Tudisco of Rhine Cliff? First of all, I don't agree with the proposal. I think having one appointed assessor...
I'm sorry, who are you?
Meg Tudisco. Having one appointed assessor could leave the taxpayers more vulnerable to malfeasance in office and could give rise to charges of the intrusion of politics in assessing decisions, valid or not, and no matter which party is in control. If continuing education is a goal, why not make that a requirement for elected assessors just as it is, with what are described as certified public assessors? The savings associated appear to total just under $24,000 in the interim, $6 per parcel. But it would be good to know if the cost of defending against challenges to assessment values has decreased, remained the same, or increased in those municipalities that have switched to a single appointed assessor since the switch. Savings upfront could be wiped out if not exceeded if legal costs increase significantly. Finally, it's disappointing that the information posted on the town's website did not provide notice to the people that this change could be subject to a referendum. The decision on whether or not to submit the proposal to a referendum is at the discretion of the Town Board, since the proposal means that the right to vote would be taken away from the people, substituting administrative action for direct election, but the people decide whether they agree with the proposal or not. That's the Democratic way of saying it.
Thank you. Would you hand that to the clerk if you have a written statement? Anybody else?
You know me from before. This is my third time. I have seen nothing to convince me that the Town Board should make a change in the assessor setup. Our present assessors have done an outstanding job, have received the proper schooling, have complied with all the necessary interstate regulations, have never run afoul of any state issues, and have never been audited for discipline. It's grossly unfair to compare assessment costs between communities because most budgets are set up differently, like apples and oranges. The notion that three assessors could or would not agree on certain assessments is absolutely asinine and doesn't even deserve a comment. That is just ridiculous. As far as hours go, the assessors work the necessary hours to get the job done. There is no overtime, and they get the same pay whether they work 10 hours a week or 50 hours. I could care less what the Northern Dutchess Alliance thinks about anything. They came into existence during the twilight years of my belligerent service, which at that time totaled 39 years. And now, my third year of a direct appointment from Governor Andrew Cuomo to a workers' compensation board in New York City, which gives me a total of 42 years of public service, which give me a slight edge over, over newer people who are testing the public service arena. I am not the first, I am not for one minute bragging about my experiences or ability. The first thing I learned in 1967 was honorable honesty, integrity, and accuracy. I can smell a rat from 100 miles away, and in this case, it is a big one. There was no question that four months ago, the Town Board had picked a knight in shining armor to replace the present assessors at a hefty salary plus benefits. I knew who this was, and so did a lot of others. However, now the Town Board has reserved course, reversed course, and wants to hire a part-time assessor at a mediocre salary that would work very limited hours. This is pure nonsense, as the assessor has to work a number of hours to do the job properly, and there is no shortcuts. The state is legally right and morally wrong, did, in allowing a majority vote of a community board to allow duly-elected officials to be removed from office. It is a terrible precedent, and communities that use it are as morally bankrupt as the state officials that adopted it. The only way that a change in the assessor program can become a reality is by a public vote on the issue in November. I also want to remind everyone, begin of the rotten mess that occurred in my part with the single assessor situation. The whole thing stinks. I am sure that my criticism does not extend to Mr. Schur and Ms. Fernandez, who were new members of the board and probably had not much knowledge of the situation. Thank you.
Any further comment?
My name is William McGann. I'm a current assessor. I read the reasons for a proposed local law, and I, I just want to make a couple of comments. I competed twice before the board. And on the third paragraph of the first page, I want to emphasize, when we have open book or we're contacted by a resident of the town or village, we do return the phone call within at least 24 hours, and we meet with them privately. But if a decision is made during open book, or there's an adjustment made on an assessment, it's made concurrently with all three members present. We discuss it, we make a consensus. No one member on this board makes the sole decision. I wanted to emphasize that point, because it was in the paragraph, the third paragraph in the first page. Also, I agree with the percentage of elected assessors. It used to be 50%, now it's 12. But also, you have elected sole assessors, and the town of Northeastern Armenia has elected assessors as well. So, it's not 88% sole assessors throughout the state. I don't know the exact figure, but I think that figure might be a little off. As far as our salaries go, we get collectively $30,000. We do not get any benefits. Generally, when we do field work, we generally ride two in a vehicle, sometimes even three. Might say, well, that sounds kind of a waste of time, but it's, it's really a check, so no one is making a random, and we don't individually assess our own streets or anywhere we live. We usually have someone, a member of the board do that. The reason, our costs may seem high, is that we have about $15,000 tenant legal and five. When we run up against large corporations like CBS and Stop &amp; Shop, you have to have legal advice in these Article VII hearings. So, that's, that's an added cost, and it isn't appropriate to the assessor department. Also, occasionally, we need a professional assessor, I said, a second opinion, to defend our, our opinion. So, that runs a cost, that's $5,000 on the budget. I just want to reiterate that Henry and I, Henry has served, he's out in California, had a pre-planned vacation with him and his wife. They're visiting their daughter at Lake Tahoe. He would have been here tonight, but I emphasize again, his 28 years of experience and 26 years of experience, and we have an excellent third member coming on board, Charlie Wells. He's a very respected contractor, and it's not a conflict of interest. But when you come to evaluate homes, what better skill do you need than be a contractor to build, you know, Mr. Schur? You can't get snowed by some towns person or village person who says, "I got a building for me for $10,000," when it takes maybe $30,000 or $40,000 to do the job. So, I just want to end that, and I'm very proud to serve the town, and I hope I continue. And I'm, I speak for Henry. He's a very successful businessman, contractor, property manager, and he's been elected once and reelected six times, so I'm popular vote here in town. Thank you for your time, and...
Thank you, Bill.
My name is John Worth, and I reside at 36 Trinity Place. This proposal, because it involves the removal of elected officials from office, I thought is deserving of some additional discussion, and I would like to share with you some of my thoughts about this proposal. I am taking no position either for or against this proposal. I think that's for the board to decide what's in the best interest of Rhinebeck. But my first thought is, is how important is the Assessor's Office? The Assessor's Office is probably one of the more important, if not the most important department in the town government, and why? Because it involves taxes, and it's taxes that provide you with the operating revenues to run our government, the town government, the village government, and the school district. So, I suggest that before restructuring that Assessor's Office, you ask a certain number of questions. Are the elected assessors competent, the present elected assessors competent, to perform this sworn duty? Do the elected assessors have sufficient and adequate knowledge to perform these sworn duties? Do the elected assessors have the necessary experience to perform their sworn duties? And if they're lacking in experience, are there resources available to mitigate this lack of experience? And the answer is obviously yes. There's plenty of resources to help them in all of this continuing education that they have, and that is mandated in one case and voluntary in another. And the final question is, the present structure cost-effective. I don't see the relevance of your per parcel comparison of municipalities without knowing and comparing the particulars, as well as the source of this comparison. So, I submit that before making a change of this magnitude, you have to make a convincing case. And here's how I view the Town Board's case. One, the proposed plan would allow the town to operate in a manner which conforms to the practices in the vast majority of assessment departments in Dutchess County and New York State. My question is, unless it can be established that our present method is inadequate or cost-effective, there is no need to change. Why do we need to compare ourselves to other municipalities where this comparison may not be an apples-to-apples comparison? Secondly, you claim that disparities can occur. What evidence is there that disparities have occurred in our assessments? And third, you say the fairness of assessments will be the same, if not better. My question is, how do you improve on... My question is, how do you improve unfairness? Four, the value of encouraged versus mandatory education requirements. The present assessors are satisfying these requirements on a voluntary basis, and this requirement can be a condition when selecting a nominee for this office. Five, higher mandatory education and prescribed work hours are why an appointed assessor is preferable to an elected assessor. My question is, is there any evidence that the elected assessors have not maintained these education requirements on a voluntary basis? I think you've heard statements to the effect that they have. Is there any evidence that the elected assessors are not devoting the hours necessary to perform their sworn duties? I don't think there's any evidence to that effect. And six, the public's access to the assessor's office will be reduced in your plan. This is never, in my opinion, a good idea. Seven, existing personnel can be assigned to perform duties in other town departments. My question, will this be at the expense of performing the necessary assessment duties in the assessor's office? And will reducing these hours also result in reduced quality of performance? Eight, the projected cost of $104,305 is based on obtaining a competent and experienced assessor for $25,000 or less without benefits. This, I submit, is unrealistic. You're not going to get a competent assessor to work for less than $25,000 without benefits. That's just not going to happen in today's world. And then you want to reduce the office aides' hours to 29 hours in one situation and 13 in another. My question is, is this projection realistic? I don't think it is. There's a discrepancy I noticed between your 2012 budget, where you say the cost of operating the assessor's office is $83,177, and in your proposal, you indicated the cost is $127,253. This is in your sheet of three or so pages that you put, I think, either on Rhinebeck Forum or whatever. My question is, what's the breakdown of the $127,253 figure? I know that the assessor's salaries without benefits is less than one-third of that. And how do you arrive, without a breakdown, at your figure of what it will be, $104,305? And lastly, I realize that under the statute, you don't have to have a mandatory referendum. But I suggest that if you look at some of the other applicable statutes about mandatory referendum, you'll find that there's a very good argument that can be made for having, on this question, based on the facts, a mandatory referendum. And even if that were not the case, I think when you take away the elector's choice of their assessor, which I think, again, is a major, major step, I think they deserve, even if it's voluntary on your part, to have a referendum so they can have a voice in the matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, do you have a written statement?
I just have an outline. I'll put it into a written statement form and submit it.
Right.
Any further comment?
One more question, not a comment. Is there a date on the draft with law we should be commenting on?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. I'm Joe Wheeling.
Hi.
Hi. Is there a date on the draft of the law we should be commenting on?
Public hearing.
Is there a draft out there we should be commenting on?
No. This is a public comment for...
Is this a public comment or a public hearing?
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
It feels like the public hearing should start after we have a draft or something.
We don't know if we're going to have a draft. We're taking, we're listening to the public.
Okay. So this hearing will remain open until we have...
Or close, and we'll not do anything.
Okay. So it will be continued once there's a draft?
If there is, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Good evening. Jim Burden, 68 Chestnut Street in the Village. My former capacity as mayor, of course, this is my third public hearing. I was here for the first two as mayor. And my issue all along has been a lack of information, and it still remains an issue for me. You know, there are handouts here on the tables, but when I look at this, I see no information from the town board as to why they're proposing to do this. You know, I think all of you know I'm not a big fan of the state of New York in telling us as a municipality what we should be doing. It's actually kind of laughable, I think, about the world on hardy movies and saying, "This is a fine mess you've gotten us into." I don't feel a lot of faith in all of you to tell us how to run our government here in Rhinebeck, but they do what they do up there. Again, for me, it's a lack of information. I'd like to know why you folks feel we need to make this change. You know, a lot of other people have shared the same comment that I have. Our assessors have done a fantastic job. I mean, Emery has 28 or 29 years of experience. I don't see how we can find anybody better than him. Bill McGann's got six years of experience. I know Charlie, and I know his abilities. He's going to be a great assessor. So until I see a reason why we really need to make this change, I just, I can't accept what's being posted. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have someone here from the Office for Real Property and Taxation, John Wollam. If anybody has any other questions or any board members. John, is there, you don't really make a statement, do you, here for questions? Thank you for coming. Any further comment, questions? Any board discussion?
Let me ask, John, how has it worked out in towns that have gone from three elected to one appointed assessor? What has been the experience?
Please, would you come to the...
Good evening, everyone. As far as the experience, typically, when a town or city makes a decision to go to sole assessor, as far as I know, the process is pretty smooth. Again, as some of the speakers have noted, there is a law that governs the process, it's Real Property Tax Law 328, and that does allow a municipal board to do this either by a straight vote without referendum, submitting it for a permissive referendum or mandatory referendum. You know, perhaps the best reference I can give you is that recently, the town of Crawford in Orange County chose to go from a three-person board to a sole-appointed assessor. So perhaps you may want to speak with them about their experience and why they chose to do that.
Why do you think... Do you agree that the majority of towns have gone from three to one?
Yes. Historically, and I couldn't offer you a year as a reference, but there was a time in the state's history where probably the vast majority of municipalities had three-person elected boards of assessors. And over time, that has certainly developed to the situation we have today, where I think in terms of sole assessors, whether you're talking... One of the speakers referenced that there is a sole-elected assessor. That's very true. There are not a lot of those individuals in that capacity statewide, but it certainly is a viable option. Relative to sole assessors statewide, I believe the count is now closer to 90 percent statewide as opposed to three-person boards.
And why do you think the trend has been that way?
You know, I think the circumstances vary from municipality to municipality. In recent years, we haven't seen too many of these discussions because so many places are already using a sole-appointed assessor. Typically, I think that particularly in more rural areas, there's a tendency, when they say, "Well, look, we want to go to a sole assessor," there's typically an interest in having one person who might be able to devote full-time effort towards the assessment function, as opposed to three individuals who might be part-time.
Any other questions?
Can we ask the board's question?
Sure. Could you please approach the...
Thank you, John. I don't know a lot of the background on this, so I'm just curious to hear from you guys about what is motivating you at this point in time to consider making this change?
I think we issued a statement that's online that has a full explanation of the reasons for the proposal. I think you can see it on there.
Could you give the executive summary?
This is a public hearing. We're here to listen to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
With one more comment?
Come on up.
I would just like to pose one question to you. I know the day, my last day, we were at Village Hall. You were there for the lunch and gathering they had for me. We were speaking about this issue that day, and you had gone, said you had gone to a Dutchess County Mayor's Supervisors Meeting and had spoken to some people. And several of those municipalities had gone from three to one. And you did comment, I believe, that those people had said that a lot of them weren't happy with it, the way it worked out. And I'm just wondering if you could share with the group here some of the comments that those folks have made and the reason why it didn't work out for them. Thank you.
Sure. Briefly, out of the, I think there are 23 taxing municipalities in the county because it's towns and cities, not villages. We, Myland and Pine Plains are the only three left with three elected. Some frustration was just that a single assessor couldn't get it all done. And some people in the CAPS program were not satisfied with the parcel payment to consolidate, consolidated assessment plan. So there was some skepticism there. Come on up.
While we have the resource in the state here, could we hear a little bit about how easy it is to go from elected to appointed or back to elected if it doesn't work out for the town? And also, is there any assurance that the terms under state law 328 will stay the same? Or could that change the responsibilities and the rules under which that appointed assessor would have to work? I'd love to hear from the state on that.
Sure. John, would you mind?
Okay, 328, as I mentioned before, is the law that allows for the change from a three-person board to sole-appointed assessor. I don't know of anything in the works that would change that. I don't know that that law has been changed or updated in quite some time. The only other thing I could add is that I'm aware that... And I don't think that this is covered by Real Property Tax Law, which is what this law is part of. There may be, in fact, I know there is something, I don't remember if it's town law or something else, but there is a provision that states that when a town reaches first-class status, and what that means is, once the population of a town hits 10,000, the town is obligated to change to a sole-appointed assessor. And certainly, typically, places will make this decision before they hit that point, but there have been some places that have made that change because they've reached that population threshold as a result of the census.
Red Hook being one of them. They recently went to the one-appointed because they're a town of the first class now.
Does that get at your question, or is there something else I can...
If the town chooses to go, and today we're under 10,000, if we choose to go to appoint it, can we go back to elected?
My understanding is that once a town goes to a sole-appointed assessor, it cannot go back to a three-person board.
All right. Could I ask one question while you're there? Would it be fair to assume that most of these municipalities that go from three to one do that because they've grown to this point, over the threshold of 10,000, and they have a requirement for a full-time assessor as opposed to a part-time assessor?
I think that's certainly part of it. You know, I think that as municipalities grow, as the work increases, there may be thinking that, boy, we really need one full-time person to oversee the function. And, you know, I would say in any assessor's office, it's not just the work of the assessors, which is, of course, very important, but it's also the support staff that helps the assessor get the work done, whether it's data collectors or people who deal with the public when they call, accept exemption applications, things of that nature.
Thank you. Sure.
Does the state have any breakdown for Class II towns, which we are? As to how many are single assessors and how many are reassessors?
I don't have that available, but I can ask to see if that is.
Okay. I'd be interested in that statistic.
So when we become a town of the first class, we will have to change?
That's my understanding, that if the census report shows that the population is in excess of 10,000, 10,000 or more, then yes, the town will have to switch to a sole-appointed assessor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wollam? Any further public comment?
I just have one more comment. I'm dismayed by the fact I brought up several times about Hyde Park. If there ever was an example of why you shouldn't have a single, that is it. And nobody has addressed it, and I find that discouraging because it should be addressed. It was a disgusting situation. It occurred with one paid, full-time assessor. And nobody seems to want to touch it with a 10-foot pole when it's there. Thank you.
Would you...
I'd just like to say, Carol, in response to your question, my understanding is that the reason for this was cost savings. I'm still trying to understand a lot of it myself. So if there's anything you or anybody out there is not clear about, I will be more than happy to respond with any detail that I can find, and I will research diligently for you because I understand how important this is to all of you, and your voices need to be heard, and I understand you need to understand. I want to understand it better myself.
I'd just like to go on the record, cost savings was never an issue for me personally. We're a board of peer. We're five people. We are supposed to operate together. Personally, I was interested in the fact that there could be one full-time professional assessor.
Could I just make one statement?
Of course.
The term "professional," the state uses "certified."
Yes.
We all consider ourselves professionals.
I apologize. I didn't mean to be disparaging. It was first brought up by our search area attorney, I think we said that several meetings ago, who asked us why. And, you know, we're verging on becoming a class, a town of the first class. And it's something that I've personally discussed many times with the Chair of the Assessors Department, and it's something that we're looking at, you know. It's never been about a cost savings for me. It's been about a delivery of a service to the town. Any further comment or questions? If not, can we make a motion to close the public hearing?
Right. I move to close the public hearing, and I think we've got a lot to consider. We've heard a lot. And I think we need time to think about what we...
Did you, Mr. Really have another comment before we...
Close or continue?
We made a motion to close. We may not take action on this. I mean, that's something we can discuss. Do you guys want to continue it? We've made a motion to close.
I think we ought to close.
I actually suggested, you know, we're going to close this public hearing. You're going to have to have a law once you have a law.
We may not choose to have a law, you know.
You have a law.
We realize that. Yes, we realize that. Thank you. Yep. We have a motion on the floor to close in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming out and asking your questions, commenting.
Thank you very much.
John, thank you for coming up and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think we're going to take a motion to make a five-minute recess. Joe, can I have a second on a motion? Bruce is stepping in, we're going to recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks for our recess there. Let's start the meeting up again, I think we have another public hearing. And, sorry, I took that out of order, Mr. McGuire, I, we have a local law amending the town zoning district maps established pursuant to Town Chapter Code 125. And we have a couple of people here to speak to this. John, would you like to take it?
Have you found a letter that was sent?
Joe, hold on, we let him give an introduction. Go ahead, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
John Lyons, Brampton Lyons, counsel for the town board on this matter. As you know, the town board has a policy in place for those who wish to ask to have changes made to the zoning law. In this particular case, the town board has before it petitioned by John McGuire to make a change in the town zoning district map. Essentially, the change is to, concerns an area near where John lives, and it proposes to add a neighborhood infill overlay district. John's planning consultant is with us this evening, and he'll be able to explain in a little bit more detail exactly what's being proposed. The town board members, I sent you an email yesterday that sort of summarized what you've done so far in connection with this matter and laid out the elements that have yet to be accomplished. Essentially, you have the public hearing this evening, and then after the public hearing, you'll have to conclude your seeker review, make a boardfront consistency determination, and then take action on the proposed amendment. If the town board members don't have any questions for me, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dan Schuster, who is the planning consultant for Mr. McGuire, who will just explain a little bit more detail about what's being proposed.
Thank you, yes, we'll have Mr. Schuster explain, and this is a public hearing, so we'll take public comment after, so thank you, Mr. Schuster.
I ask John a question, and I don't know if it's you or Mr. Schuster, I would like a copy of the letter that was sent out to Mr. McGuire, if somebody has a copy of that.
It's not in the file, John, goatee.
I thought it was just the hearing.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did check that almost, I think 39 letters went out certified mail on the 12th. I thought that was in the file, so thank you for doing that, I think you went above and beyond the people in the neighborhood, which, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Good evening, everybody, my name's Dan Schuster, I'm a professional planning consultant, and Mr. McGuire retained me to help him put together the petition that's before the board tonight. I'll summarize the situation briefly. Up until the end of 2009, when the town adopted the major new zoning law, this neighborhood, which is basically on King Road, McGuire Lane, and Ackard Hook Road, was zoned R1A, which meant minimum lot size in the neighborhood was one acre, it was a residential zone. The zoning change in 2009 designated the entire, virtually the entire area of the town east of Route 9, including this neighborhood, as a RC5 district, which was a residential zone, required a minimum lot size of five acres, and correspondingly increased setbacks from property lines. What that did was to make 35 of the 37 lots in this neighborhood non-conforming, certainly in terms of lot size, area, and in most cases in terms of setbacks, wet setbacks, side-yard setbacks, and so forth. The drafters of the zoning law recognized that there were areas within the town, particularly these areas requiring a large lot size, which were not the same as most of that area, and they provided a mechanism to deal with that by creating something called the neighborhood infill overlay district. What that district does is to overlay a different controls on that portion of, in this case, the RC5 district, and refer it to essentially the same ground rules which existed prior to 2009, one acre, minimum lot size, comparable setbacks and so forth. It was placed on the zoning map in only one location, Lakes of Pastor. But the characteristics of the neighborhood we're talking about tonight are very similar in terms of the nature of the neighborhood, density, typical lot size. What Mr. McGuire's petition asked the board to do is to designate that area, just about 42 acres, Ackard Hook, Hook Road, King Street, McGuire Lane, as a neighborhood infill overlay district. The lot size and setback provisions of towns that need change to an R1 district would apply. The uses would be somewhat fewer than allowed in the RC5 district, because the RC5 district allows a lot of non-residential uses, which are somewhat typical in low-density residential areas, but really are not appropriate in a more densely populated neighborhood, so there'd be fewer uses committed. And as I said, the bulk requirements would be the same essentially as they were previously under the present ground rules with the RC5 district, almost any extension to a house in this area would require a variance from the zoning board appeals because we couldn't possibly satisfy the various setback requirements. That would be relieved to a considerable extent by this change. As required under the zoning law, the petition would refer to the town planning board for a review, and the planning board would unanimously recommend it to the town board, that would be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I hope that explains it.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. This letter doesn't have the time for the hearing, was that actually filled in before it was sent out?
Yeah.
And to summarize it, if we pass this, it will allow construction of one or more additional houses in the district?
No, it's.
Is that the effect of it?
There are two properties which have a sufficient area to be subdivided if this were approved, and as the planning board pointed out in their review, assuming the absolute minimum most efficient, minimum lot size most efficient subdivision, would be a potential for eight additional.
Last question, we have this, so it goes in our official record as to what was sent to the local people?
More importantly is that with the change of the zoning, the existing lots will conform, I mean, the homes on the existing lots will conform.
Most of them, some of those lots are even smaller than the one acre which prevailed previously, but many of them which were conforming were made non-conforming by the 2009 law that become conforming again.
Right, so we have heard from the planning board with the recommendation that we consider this, we have not heard from the CAV, which we take to mean that they didn't find any issues for our consideration. I think I said, or John said, we are the lead, we still have to go through seeker and sign our EAF, and are there any other questions or comments? Mr. McGuire, would you like to speak, or you don't, you don't need to?
Boy, I think Dan covered it.
Yes, I think he did. Does the public have any questions or anybody on the board? Please, please come up and introduce yourself.
My name is Margaret Ford, I live on 13 King Road.
Hello.
I'm sorry, you live on where?
13 King Road.
And that's part of this district?
That's part of the whole district. I've been speaking to Mr. McGuire, and one of my primary concerns with putting more homes in this very small area is traffic, traffic right now. I live adjacent to the stop sign from McGuire to King, and Ackard Hook, where McGuire comes out onto Ackard Hook, it is limited sight, as I told Mr. McGuire. And for that reason, a lot of traffic from McGuire comes to King and out that way because it is better sight to Route 9.
King is closer to Route 9 than McGuire?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you're on the corner of King and Ackard Hook?
King and McGuire.
Okay.
Okay. Where McGuire comes out.
At the back end, yes.
Yes. A lot of people don't pay any attention to that stop sign as it is, and the speeding also is very prevalent in that area. If you put four additional homes in there, or I would think three would come out onto McGuire, one onto Ackard Hook directly, that puts a lot more pressure on that small area, and more traffic, and more possibility for accidents. And it takes away from the quality of life in that very small area, as far as I'm concerned. So that is my primary. Also, you have luxury homes from the Ackard Hook end, you have that development, and then you have Stanford Court, and now you have, again, this small area of homes that look totally out of place, and I live there, so I recognize that. And I don't think that adding more to that problem necessarily improves the look of the neighborhood and the area. So I'm against the proposed change to the area.
Thank you very much for coming. Please, yeah, please come up.
I'm sorry, could you give me your name again?
Margaret Ford.
Ford, F-O-R-D.
Like a heart. My name is Bonnie Hall, I live at 7, I live at 17 King Road.
Hi, thank you.
I'm against this changing of the zoning because two of the pieces of property that are larger than 1.5 acres are Mr. McGuire's piece, and there's another five acres which runs behind me, and runs behind all of us on that side of King Road.
On that side of King? Do you mean on King Road and not on 9G?
It's Ackard, Ackard Hook and Route 9, there's a home for sale by 7 acres.
Yes.
And we are concerned that that could be potentially developed if the zoning changes. There's also a little piece of that property that comes out onto King Road.
Yes.
Which could possibly be used for driveways, you know, roads behind.
So you're on King and you back up to Route 9?
Back up to these woods. And what I find very nice about this neighborhood is that there are a bunch of little houses, but there's woods in between, there's woods around, and to take that away would, you know, just be house upon house upon house. And I don't really understand why, you know, you have the five-acre zoning, you made the comprehensive plan, and that was wonderful, but now you're going to change it, and they just make those for development, which is what you didn't want to have to deal with. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Please.
My name is Frank Rolfe, and I live at 26 Ackard Hook Road. And I bought it onto the property of John McGuire. And I feel that I would like to see that property developed, we would have some more additional homes, maybe modern homes, some new families coming in, and, you know, I think it would be a nicer neighborhood. I can't see where people living on McGuire Lane there, near Ackard Hook Road, are going to affect King Road in any way, because I can't imagine people, let's say where my dentist lives, going around and over to King, and they'll come out on Ackard Road, and really, Ackard Hook Road is not that busy a road. I mean, my, my living room window, I look at Ackard Hook Road, I can sit there in my recliner, and maybe in a time of a half hour or more, maybe I see three cars, two cars, one car, you know, the traffic comes off of Burger Road a little bit, you know, that's sort of a, when I go to work, I have a part-time job out of Myland Hollow Road, but I go up Ackard Hook, Myland, or up to Burger Road, down, then up to 9G around that way, so I don't think traffic would become a problem, really. Now, personally, I would welcome, you know, some more families in that area, I think it would help fill out that little blind spot there. Now, I live on less than an acre, so I'm, I know I'm non-conforming, my house was built maybe in the 1940s. I have, say, I call it maybe three-quarters of an acre, and believe me, that's all I need to maintain, I mean, if I was given six acres to maintain, I'd move, I'd have to, I'd have to go, you know? So, I don't, I really don't object to them trying to develop, and if John can, you know, produce some lots there, and maybe we get a few, you know, some new homes built, we'll have a new family come in maybe, and the neighborhood is all condensed right there. Now, what would happen out on Route 9 there, I'm not sure, maybe that gentleman who owns that property might decide, well, I can put some lots, but they would be facing Route 9, and if they had homes there, their exit probably would be a driveway, enough setback, and they'd exit and head onto Route 9.
Yes.
So, but anyway, I want to go on record, as a resident of that area, I would be glad to see this land developed.
Well, thank you for.
Or, you know, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Let's see if anybody else has a, if anybody else would like to speak. Is there any further comment before a second time, that's our practice? No, I think you'll be up then, thank you. That's okay. You know, while we're waiting, Kathy Kinsella, did you have any comment about site distance on McGuire Road onto Ackard Hook, or?
No, there's a condition that someone's concerned about, I urge them to bring it to my.
Yes, I was going to say, I think, Mrs. Ford, that you raised the question of site, and you should, it's Kathy's purview, and I'm sure she'd be happy to speak to you about it.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Rolfe, since I live at that stop sign where McGuire comes out onto King, I do assure you, I know quite a few of my neighbors on McGuire, that they most definitely use King Road to gain access onto Ackard Hook. They also do speed through that area, and I'm sure Bonnie can attest to that as well. And I'm not talking about going 50 or 60 miles an hour, obviously, excuse me, but it is a small road, so 40 miles an hour is quite a lot of speed to gain on that little bit of road. So, yes, they do, sir. Is it, as if people are commuting, 100 people commuting from.
Is it, as if people are commuting, 100 people commuting from an area? No, it's a small neighborhood, but that traffic still feeds out onto King that goes out onto Ackard Hook. So, it is mostly the going to and from work which is a concern. And on the weekends, when we have visitors to this area, and they're going through the back and looking all over. So, it is a concern for those people who do live on King, the traffic is, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm just pulling up a map here. Yeah.
I guess I have a couple of questions.
One, one second, please. Sure, I just referenced it on my phone, because I thought I knew what you were talking about, and I just wanted to confirm it. And yes, I'm aware, so, I'm fine, Mr. McGuire, unless anybody else wants to see it, but thank you.
Yeah, no, I'd like to see it.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, how many houses, assuming we make a change, how many houses are we talking about? Do you have one house, two house, three house?
Well, here's the proposed subdivision here, and then... And then this is Route 9, and we're saying that there's a house right here, this could possibly be...
What you've got here is a five acre parcel, is it two family house on the other area, so that, that accounts for two acres.
This could possibly be subdivided into one or two lots.
And see, maximum, there could be three.
So, it's a maximum of three or maximum of...
No problem.
Three. In theory, if the lots laid out, you could get three here, and the town's got three here, so you're talking about a maximum of six.
But these three would come out onto Route 9, and probably wouldn't be able to exit onto King Road.
And subdivision would have to go through planning board approval to take into account access.
That's north.
Right. And this is the property you own here?
This, this orange outline.
Oh, is the property...
These are the, this is what we proposed before, and I almost had approval.
Does the overlay district include that parcel on Route 9?
Yes.
And does it have to?
Yes.
And that's because...
Be spot zoning if we didn't?
Yeah, to leave it out would be...
Exclusionary?
It would just not be very appropriate to, you know, the neighborhood. I mean, it provides as the, the neighborhood infill overlay zone, one of its objectives is to provide housing opportunities in smaller houses in inappropriate places.
Is it unfair to ask you how many houses you're thinking of?
It would be maximum of four, that's my house. There's my house, this would go out here, and these three would go here. We had preliminary approval from our town supervisor, Hiroy Kathy. And this, of course, when this subdivision is built, this site distance will all prove. So, there may be, there may be trees and brushes, brush that have appeared upon that that could solve any problems that exist. So, it would be one, two, three, four. My house now, this is my shop, which I have to close up, because that's nonconforming now, so I'd either...
Oh, so that would close up?
Yeah, my business are 48 years, yeah.
Are you ready to retire?
Yeah. And so, someone either could keep that barn and build another house, or whatever they want to do, or I could keep it in store, my truck and everything.
And then I have a question for John Rolf. John, if somebody in this area has a nonconforming lot, and I gather everybody has a nonconforming... What's the ramification, is that a big deal, it's all grandfather, why is that, why is that a concern for anybody that they have nonconforming, now it'll be conforming, what difference does it make to people?
I think that the, the primary difference, and you wrote in additional information, I think you have it, but the primary difference, Joe, is that nonconforming uses are, the expansion of nonconforming uses is very restricted. There's a, basically, nonconforming uses, the planning policy behind them is to eventually sunset them. And that's not really what the aim is for this area, but that's the reason why nonconforming uses are very restricted. They can only expand a certain amount of square footage. And so, I think that the, probably the greatest freedom that would be afforded by being released from nonconforming status would be able to be, able to expand without those restrictions.
So, people who have an existing house, you're saying would be able to expand whereas if it's nonconforming, they might not get a variance?
And those restrictions are usually expressed as a percentage of existing floor area.
The difference in setbacks is substantial. Under the existing zoning requires 100-foot, 20-yard setback, 50 feet side, 50 feet rear.
That's for a five acre?
Yeah, with McGuire.
Well, so, for instance, it would be difficult for somebody to put a deck on their home in this...
Right, if you wanted to put a shed or something, and you had to build a setback, you have to...
But even more, more, even, you know, of interest to me too is what five acre zoning allows. And the list of things that are allowed in the five acre zoning, I don't have a list on me, but you could put a mini golf thing in there, you could have horse barns, so bringing this into a one acre zoning, my understanding is that it really just makes it only houses, there's no other use for it.
There are a few other uses, but the uses are more consistent with a small dense neighborhood, as this neighborhood is.
Right, doesn't sound like anybody can put a horse farm.
We haven't heard anything.
Any other questions or comments?
Only on King Road.
If you, you could come to the... I think we need to, I think the camera's set up, Michael, yeah, but thank you.
What she's saying is that most of us on King Road have like a third of an acre or a half an acre, so it doesn't really impact us, impact us at all.
I'm sorry, what doesn't impact you?
The conforming, the overlay, it doesn't really impact us, and the other on McGuire have an excess acre. Right, so their setbacks are not as impacted as ours.
I'm sorry, confused?
I, I'm a little confused. I don't understand how, you know, what that change to us, why you're saying that to us.
If your lot is not, is not going to be conforming with the new district, it's probably not conforming.
So, right, so all of us...
I'm sorry, can you, you have to speak to the mic and speak to the board.
Right, so all of us on King Road, it wouldn't make any difference at all, we're still nonconforming, even if it's one acre zone, that's what we're saying, if there's a lot of houses on...
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, McGuire, could you show me where you live on this map? You're here, and the other lady, where does she live?
You can mark on that line.
Can I?
I was talking about the turnaround right onto King Road, that I'm concerned about, if that develops, this could develop and change the whole neighborhood.
You're here, and... Mr. McGuire, you don't own this lot, do you? That border is Route 9, that's not yours.
But it is for sale, and if the zoning changes, and it opens up the potential for development that we're concerned about.
So, conceivably, could this be done not including? Yes, I'm not sure I got through it, you got an answer, or I could... Why couldn't it?
I guess it could, I'd have to take a look and think about it, it would be an obvious, you know, carving out of a parcel that...
It's not supposed to...
We can't hear the cross discussion, I'm sorry.
You, you need to, yeah, address the board and not one, one person at a time, I don't think we've answered this. The question was, could we carve out that five acre lot from this neighborhood, from this zoning change overlay?
It's possible, I think we'd have to give some thought to the reasons behind it, and to make sure that, I mean, everything, every time that you're doing something...
We're not asking that you do, I mean, you know, that's, this is one person's question, but we're not...
But theoretically, it's possible.
Does our zoning law allow us to do two or three lots coming out of the same driveway? I guess we do, because I've seen... Okay, because in some point, last town I lived in, they wouldn't let people do that. And so, all, if you carved that five acre piece into three or four lots, they would all have, they would all come out on, on King Road, through that narrow...
Well, this is speculation, because there's nothing in front of us for this lot. The zoning request was brought to us by...
You're actually both correct, but what I would say is that, that's something that, that could be considered, okay? And that, one of the caveats that we talked about before is that anybody who came, just because you have meet the space requirements to be able to subdivide, one of the other considerations that, you know, the planning board will review, is to make sure that safety considerations are met, and the other requirements of the subdivision law.
If those were residences, and they had driveways that came out onto King Road in the back of a lot on Route 9, is that correct? I think that's the way it was said, yeah. It's questionable, okay.
Could you please, if you go to the microphone?
As, 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 being a consultant for 48 years building roads all around Ryberg, to me, and in subdivision, it wouldn't be practical to run a road in that, in that little jog there by...
Where's his jog here?
Yes.
Yeah, off of King Road, because number one, it's probably, it's probably about $250 a linear foot to build a town road now to gain in two or three lots, and it just wouldn't be practical for this kind of development, I believe. Plus, the total of that land, if you look at it, there's a large ridge between King Road and Route 9. So, it's, that's kind of going to limit the amount of, size of, the number of lots there. Plus, usually when you get around a rock outcropping like that, the soil changes, so the lots may not be big enough to hold the...
Perk.
To hold the separate system design. So, that, that will, those three factors, I think, will limit, but I can't guarantee it, I don't own the land, I'm just throwing out some information, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Kathy, yes?
Just a point of information to answer Mr. Sheriff's question, and welcome aboard. You asked about can multiple lots use a same driveway? And the answer is that they can, however, three or more properties accessing a driveway, it's then considered a road under county law, but the road could be a private road versus doesn't mean it's a town road. I think Mr. McGuire pointed out, it's true, there would not be, and would not be the best interest of the town to look for a public road that are serving private lots without any kind of thoroughfare or thoroughfare or access or benefit to the community at all. So, I just wanted to clarify that question.
Thank you.
I hope I did.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to add one other thing to clarify, point on the nonconforming lots. Even those lots that would be nonconforming under, if this proposal were to be passed, there still would be some difference. In other words, the setbacks that would, the difference in the setbacks between the five acre, that are required by the five acre zone, and what would be required under the neighborhood infill district, which would be much smaller, which would mean that if you were seeking a variance, to put something in the setback, one of the tests that the zoning board of appeals applies is the substantiality of the variance from the requirement. So, the fact that the requirement would be shrunk would make it much more likely that you'd be able to obtain a variance.
Thank you.
If your lot was nonconforming.
Let me make sure I understand where we are. Would you, two ladies, the homeowners who, would you object, assuming, and I don't know if we could, or if we want to, but assuming that we carved out this land, the land that borders Route 9, that does conceivably have access to King Road, and I understand Mr. McGuire doesn't think it'll ever be, but it can't obviously give me a guarantee. Would you be happy if we could carve that out? Would that solve your problem, or you, you still have a problem?
If you can't even mic, sir, because I do have a problem with it.
Sure, I, I understand, since I've just had a double knee replacement.
Oh, I had four knees then, I had five. I'm a champ.
You can't have five knees, they don't allow that.
Yeah, they do allow revisions. So, my problem would still be the traffic.
Traffic.
The traffic, considering it is such a small neighborhood, and it is, if you drove the area, the traffic is considerable, and I do believe that people do use King because of the fact that you have a problem with a knoll coming up to Ackard Hook. And it is brushing, as Mr. McGuire, I think, will attest to that. And you have a limited sight, so it is much better, it's much safer to drive around McGuire, come to King, and then come out King onto Ackard Hook, reaching 9.
Okay, so your fear is if this is developed along McGuire, when people won't go directly to Ackard Hook, but will come around and use King Street, that, that's your problem?
Yes, as the dentist now has a home office on this water.
And, and you think a lot of people do that?
The chance is increased from that as well.
Let me ask the other lady, would you be happy if we could carve out this, or are you worried about traffic?
I am worried about traffic, not as much as she is, due to where my house is and her houses, but I would be very happy if that was carved out.
I think we should deal with what's before us.
Well, as part of that, I guess we got it.
Is there, are there any further comments or questions? I think we should halt, Mr. McGuire, did you want to say?
Over the years, we've always kept the lots, I'm John McGuire, we've kept the lots, you know, open, thinking perhaps our children would come in, we'd have lots for them, however, they're settled where they live now, and then we felt we'd subdivide for, to enhance our retirement and so forth. And over the years, the kids have camped, built sheds and treehouses, and have free reign of the property over the years, so we felt we'd now do this. Some of the benefits for the town would be increased taxation. There wouldn't be any increase, I've been a firefighter for, since 1957, a fire chief for 12, and chief officer for 17, helped develop the previous Dutchess County Mutual Aid Plan. And from my views, I'm still serving, we wouldn't need any more fire equipment, there wouldn't be any more expenses there. Police Department, but as a firefighter, you work closely with the police department, I can't see where we need more police. Highway Department, we have a very fine highway department, ended up by our very fine supervisor, superintendent Hiroy Kathy, and I can't see where that's going to add to it, the road is already there and provided for, it checked out in 1986. So, I think there are a lot of benefits here, plus, we're going to retain marvelous new families to come in, like the ones we have there now, to children to go to our schools, perhaps somebody that served in the fire department, or rescue squad, serve in library boards, serve here, and all the committees you have for the town. So, I, I really think it's a, it's a benefit for the town, not just for me, for my retirement, but I think it's a benefit for the town. And the subdivision we had done previously has been called as one of the nicest in Dutchess County. So, I'm very proud of what we did there, and I'll make sure that we carry on in the same realm of doing a nice job there. So, I thank you very much, and...
Thank you.
And thank you, folks, for your comments.
Any further comments? If not, I'm going to make a motion, I'd like to leave the public hearing. John, unless you tell me it's not a good idea, I'd like to leave it open until our next town board meeting, when we get our secret, when we deal with our determination and our EAF. Is that a good idea? So, a motion to keep the public hearing open until... So, a motion to keep the public hearing open until our next meeting, when we will vote on this, and second?
Yeah, I, I agree we should keep it open.
All in favor?
Oh, my God.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for coming, John Lyons and Anshuister.
Any other questions on that?
How about, no, we're-
That could be a gratuity, I would have to be careful about this.
Shut them up. Is it? Hey? Thank, thank you, John.
We go to the rec?
Yes.
The next meeting is open for you.
Public comment is still open? Yes.
You can come?
You guys, we're still, we're going to an, our next item, unless somebody, do we need another break? I'm going to call for another five minute recess. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the meeting and, and get back on track here. Thank you for coming. Thanks, Bill.
Do you have a ring here?
Uh, we'll start. We have a presentation. Chris, thank you for hanging in there, I'm sorry to, to hang you up. We have a presentation tonight from Chris Carey, who will be appointed tonight as our recreation director, and this is a presentation that she'd like to meet, make about some new software.
This is just information that I-
Could you, would you just, is that working? Could you speak in and introduce yourself? It's for the folks.
This is some information that I printed out for you. It's like an overview of what I'm going to show you now.
Great.
I think that this program is really good as far as bookkeeping, for bookkeeping, it will keep everything organized, we can take applications-
Chris, why don't you give it to John, and we'll pass it down?
Okay.
I have them in, because there's different parts of it. It'll keep each one of the activities, like the-
This is a, what is this software called?
Myrec.com.
Okay, so it's specifically for recreation departments?
Yeah, and it will, like, there's a different, you can do signups for swim team, for camp, for basketball, for anything that goes on-
Is there another one, John?
Oh, yeah.
-in the recreation department.
Thank you.
So, there's three attachments, right?
Yes. Part of it is the, the cost, and then-
Space meter.
It's just an overview of what the program is all about. The next part of this, I have been in contact with Jeanne from the town of Rydell, or town of Beekman. This is generated by the software, and I think it's a really good overview of each one of the programs and where the funds are going, and for each month, it's generated. This is in another one of, I just printed this out, this is town of Beekman, also. One of the features that I like for the camp is the alert system, you know, if anything happens, you know, the thunderstorms, the children have to be brought to a different location for their safety. They can go on there, we've been using Facebook, and then another free app that we got from, for the telephone.
Is this myrec.com? This is a sort of online website? It's, it's, it's a function of this program too? Do you get to click on these, these pictures and get more information?
Yeah, you can get more information, and you can get all of their, the sign up, the applications, and all of that.
That's with the base system?
Yeah.
And then you've got the design option, customizing?
Yeah, and we, if you go on to town of Beekman, rec department, they have the base, and I think it's pretty impressive, and it would really bring us up to date with what we, we need. And it would keep us organized on-
Instead of doing everything on paper with binders, yeah.
Right, and I think it would help the bookkeeping department, and it would help each one of the organizations, the camps, swim team, all of that. I think it would help tremendously.
Yes, take us, she's going to take us through it, and we can see it.
Can I ask kind of a complex question? What you're asking us to do is to authorize the purchase of this software, is that what you're-
I would like, yes.
That's the adjective of it?
Well, this is-
And what, can I, what is the cost we're talking about?
The costs are on the front, on the front page right here.
Okay, is there a total?
They would range probably around thirty, thirty-one hundred.
Tonight's is just a presentation. If this is something we're interested in, I would suggest we all do diligence and look at the town of Beekman and poke around in this, and get together and discuss it.
Right.
It's not on for approval tonight.
Right.
Do you need, do you need any lights to, can it, I can see.
They would, they would set everything up for us also. So, I mean, they have all, I don't know if everyone can see, all the different, you know, the disclaimer, the email blast, anything that goes on in any one of the organizations within the rec department. I'll just show. And all of this would be access. And then, we also have, you know, the facilities for, because I, for each one of the stone church or something like that, we can see, that can all be put on there also. We can, we'll have a, a calendar to see if it's the availability of each one of the things. Each one of, it would have a breakdown of all, for the financial, for the budgets, it would have a breakdown of each one of the activities that are taking place. And then you have, you can go into setting up the website itself, with, well, you know, the pictures, and to go into each one of the activities.
Excuse me, would this be a separate website from the town, or would it be part of the town website?
It would be-
Separate?
We, yeah.
It would link to it.
Why?
Because, because it's separate software?
It's a website.
Yeah, it's a club, it's in the club.
That doesn't answer my question.
Well, it's a, it's a website.
Yeah, but why, why wouldn't it be hosted in the same place that the town hosts it?
I, I don't know, it's, right now, they're sitting separate. You get your own URL and everything else.
I understand. I'm just, I mean, they got, there's fees for hosting, you know, and the problem I'm, I foresee is that, I don't know whether they're going to have mirroring, or they're going to have backup and recovery and all that stuff, and we're going to try to solve that problem for the town website, why not solve it all at once?
It's a good question. Something that this has that's good, though, is the online payment and the specific tracking-
I understand, but I mean, that's just content, as opposed to the hosting of the material. Something we could talk about offline, or I could call these guys and talk to them.
I think we should, yeah.
Ray Foley, he said to me that he, Ray Foley is who I've been speaking to, he said that he would answer any questions that you had.
I have a lot of-
Would the Drupal site, I'm sorry, I'm on the web community as well, so, would Drupal site be able to support that?
I don't know, but I know, I know that, I, when I was at the Association of Towns thing, I saw, there's a consortium of 200 municipalities and counties and so forth, an upstate, that has put together a whole facility for email, for web hosting, for document retrieval, for meeting the FOIL laws, you know, the Freedom of Information laws, you know, the whole nine yards. And it's unlimited capacity for a thousand dollars a year for all those things, and that sounds like a better deal than we're getting for any of this stuff. And if we could put, you could put the town website on there, you could put all of our email on there, you could, you could start storing documents that the town has on there, and host all, and host everything. So, I mean, that's kind of the best, the best deal I've seen so far.
Why don't we let Chris take us through this presentation?
Sure, no, I just, that's why I asked.
And see what all the functionality is of this, and then, I think that is an offline discussion-
Yes, absolutely.
-with the web committee. Because, you know, there are specific needs to rec, you know, um-
But, it's, yeah, this is a different level, it's fine.
Who developed this, Chris? Where's the developer? Are they local?
He's having, uh, we're on.
He's going.
I can forward you all his information if you want.
I think it's right here, I think we got, you know, it's on the-
Um, my, from last year, the, the problem we, I found was the paperwork, and we were not, it just, we didn't function effectively, I don't think. And it, it was online, Shelley and Kim would get it right away, we'd get the information right away, and everybody else who needs the information could get it right away. It has, we're, and then we're not handling the cash, you know, checks, everything is done on, done online.
I see what you're saying, you know, the functionality for rec interests me, website issues aside, Alan, you know, there's the, the payment and the scheduling and, yeah.
Yeah, because like, one, you know-
And it's up and running.
It would be much more efficient because for camp, then we have swim, swim lessons while the children are in the camp. So, it would link both. We would have, okay, this is, this child is enrolled in camp, now we're, he's going to be taken out during camp and brought over to swim lessons. All that would be there for us, it would be all in a report. And then the swim team would be able to sign up also on this website. And then we would all have, all of us would have the rosters of everyone who's enrolled in everything, and who has paid, and then there are alerts that pop that the account is not paid.
Somewhere. No, I, I've seen it in the past, where we, we ask for a report, and you guys come in with milk cartons full of, of paper.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, like, I'm thinking right away, this eliminates that.
Yeah, and that's what we used last year. We had the milk carton, the crates full of everything, and then, I mean-
Thirty years' edition.
There was, there was paperwork down at the cash, in the cashier's, there's paperwork here, there's paperwork everywhere.
No, and I see it now, and going through the accounts, just on who registered, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I've spoken, I've said that I had spoken to Jeanne down in the town of Beekman, and she said that she's very pleased with the program.
Beside Beekman, is anybody else using this?
Pleasant Valley, town of Kipsey. There are, there are other ones in, in the-
So, you could talk to the people in Pleasant Valley and the Kipsey?
Yeah, and Tom Connolly has spoken to, I think, the guys in Pleasant Valley, and he was the one that originally saw this, this website.
Did you do that open?
This, the schedule's-
It was the one where you could see, well, a, a family can, can look and see all the things that they've signed up for, everything for the program per year, and they have multiple-
And if you go into your name, your account, it'll show who you signed up for. And there's all this stuff. And it has all the information that we need also for emergency contacts and everything for the camp. And it will, it's all there. And if we need anything, we can go right on to site, we're not digging through paperwork to find the parent's telephone number when somebody's been hurt, God forbid, or something like that.
This, this will also help Shelley out, right?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Oh, yeah, because Shelley went kind of crazy with us last, last year, because, I mean, things were down, like I said, things were down at the cashier's office, and they're up here, and then we don't get the applications, and we're not sure who's in what week, who's not in what week, and it just helped, this, I think, would help us keep a better handle on the whole, everything that goes on, and who is paid and who hasn't paid, and-
And, and John, I don't think, you know, you could just refer people to this, rather than, and, and get them trained, rather than calling you all the time. Unless you want to talk to them.
Well, what do you mean, the public?
Yeah. The public will sign up on this thing.
I think, unless there's something, do you want us to see anything else specific? I think this is really interesting. I'd like to poke around on my computer and, you know, see if there's a test site that I, I suggest you guys do the same.
Could we just, the only thing I ask is that the next town board meeting, we decide whether we're going to do this?
Put it on the agenda.
Okay.
I think-
Then, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chris. I had a couple, can I, I just had a couple of com, of things I wanted to pass on to you, you know, I, thank you for this presentation, I, I know you need, we need to do something to shore up the rec department, I, I realize that, I, you know, we've witnessed the milk cartons full of paper slips and things, and I just want to say, and I haven't really talked to anybody else, but it's my expectation that this board will have to and want to approve all programs and schedules, all major hires, salary schedules and fees before they're set.
Right.
So, you need to plan on, you know, doing that with us, and, you know, also any printed or emailed or online material that's published. And two comments that I had from last year is that we had the town hall number on the brochure, and from May through August, town clerk's office is, you know, just constant calls for rec, and we have to change that. And the other thing is just the free swim. I think that that became something that it wasn't, so-
We're getting a new sign.
Yeah. It's not a swim for free, where everyone can come and swim for free.
Right.
But, thank you, I think this looks good, I'd like to look at it, and, you know, um-
The guy's name is Ray Foley?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody? No?
It's good.
Okay, and Alan, you'll-
I'll call Ray, get my- I'll call Ray, get my questions answered.
Thank you. We've gone so out of order here. I think we're up to, I think we're F.
Item six.
I have letters, not numbers, which is really odd.
There are, there are already no committee reports. I want to liaison...
Right. And we have the town board function and review schedule, which is, item number six. It's a resolution 2014-078, adopting town board functions and fund review schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
The discussion I'd like to have is that this is something that Bruce put together last year, and I think it's great. I think we need to go through it and decide who we want to have report to us. You know, now that we're not having liaisons to statutory boards, do we think, I'll open this for discussion, do we really think that we're going to get the planning board and, you know, all of these boards in here presenting to us? Or do we just want to limit it to the boards that we have oversight of, over? You know, sewer district, transfer station, water, sewer and water, we basically just collect, collect taxes for special districts. I don't know about having them report to us. I think that's a village function. Or, you know, I'm opening, I'm discussing this. I don't know how you guys feel.
Well, the intent that that was, the sewer district, we know there's been issues with the sewer district. We know that we're considering talking to the county about that and...
Are you talking about Vandenberg Cove?
Right.
Okay.
And as far as the water goes, that was basically the Rhine Cliff water, because that's all we have.
Right.
And...
You mean the village water system that's in Rhine Cliff and the gardens?
Right. But we still, we still represent those people. We could say we don't want to, you know, we want to pass on that one.
No, it makes sense. I just raising it for discussion. Is this what everybody wants to do? Do you guys want to look at it, workshop it a little bit? What's your input? I think it's, it certainly encompasses everything that we could think of.
Sounds like it's very ambitious. We wouldn't be here many hours if all of these people are coming in. Question why you need all these people coming in.
If you watch Panda or you go to other town board meetings, it, it's pretty quick usually, once they get the hang of it. They come in, they give their report, town board says, do you need anything? They say yes or no, and, and they move on. It's, but it's exposure to the public and it's, you know, a window into what's really going on.
I think we should try. We could always say it's too much. We're good at hurrying people up sometimes.
This has been a slow one, but we can, we can pick it up.
Yeah, your record is ruined.
Yeah, I can make it up. I know I can. I have two, I have almost, I have a year and three quarters. You know, I just, I don't see the courts coming in here and giving us a report. Or is this something we read? Are we, are we asking them to come in?
You can do it either way you want.
Thank you, Chris.
Anytime.
Good night.
Thanks. Yeah, that's not a bad idea to get a, I mean, in lieu of an appearance, they could do a written, if we, we could do a pro forma report, something, you know, fill in the blanks.
Is it common to...
I saw, yeah.
What do the, what would we expect the courts to say? That how many cases they've handled or what they need in terms of money or...
Well, money's at budget and we get an end of year report from them, but...
Yeah, it's a backlog.
I think we have a question here. Sarah?
I was just gonna say, it's a, I used to cover the Red Hook Town Board a lot too. And they do this, I think you guys probably are familiar, and they do that. They have mostly written from things like the police and courts and, I guess, I don't think courtie really reports, but I'm sure it depends on the town. You know, so some might be more appropriate as written comment, written reports that you just read real quick, like the clerk's report at the beginning of the meeting or the supervisor's, and then others. I mean, my opinion, I'm also on a town committee over at Red Hook, is that for us, we have to report once a month. And it just makes us sit down and say, like, what are the three things we did? And write it down and then send somebody to the meeting. You know what I mean? It's sort of like an accountability thing, and sometimes we don't have anything to report and so, and so it does go pretty quick. Other times, like, for example, when the rec season is over, there'll be like a really long report from the rec department, but they don't come again for the rest of the year possibly because they don't really, you know what I mean? There's not as much to report. So I, I think it doesn't, it doesn't really go very long usually, just from Red Hook, you know, from what I've seen over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments?
Well, something like the police, we get to report every month with the bill as to how many hours they spend, how many tickets they gave. Would we want anything more detailed from...
No, maybe that's it, but maybe somebody should read it so the public can hear it.
Yes.
I mean, really, we're approving it. It's in our vouchers. We could take it out and...
Yeah.
I actually wouldn't mind a little more detail on the police reports. This last one had one of the calls is a welfare call, and I thought, what does that mean? What is the police department a welfare call? I didn't understand what that was.
I assume they're checking on whether somebody's okay.
I don't know though.
But you could always ask.
You can call Pete and ask him.
Yeah, you could always ask.
I think we should take a shot at it.
Does anyone want to run with refining this and implementing it?
I wouldn't mind having some time to look it over and think it's been worked.
Is every one of these things covered by a liaison person that has to have them on?
No, no, no. We don't have liaisons to statutory boards or the police or the fire protection.
Or the courts?
Well, our statutory or elected board, yeah.
That's a new innovation.
I suggest that for those, we send a letter to each of those entities and find out and ask them to report on their progress and their status. And I assume most of them already do have such reports that they, I mean, the courts must pass on to the higher level court administration, you know? Who do the, who do the town courts answer to besides us?
Well, the state...
The state...
...in terms of the money they collect and they...
They must send, I mean, there must be, there must be reports that they generate already that we could look at and say, well, that's good, or we need something more, or whatever. No?
Yeah, there...
So I, you know, we could send a letter saying we're trying to review the status of each of these entities and, you know, do you already generate status reports? On what basis do you do, you know, what time?
Well, I'm seeing Judge Kane this week. I can just ask him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michael, if we had this, like, what kind of report would the planning board make to us?
Well, probably most effective would be the minutes of the meetings. If you wanted more than that, are its meeting notes describing what happened or resolutions? But I don't think you want all that.
I think a, you know, a one-page summary of what you did in the last month would be perfect.
Well, that would probably be what the minutes are, basically.
Yeah. You see, I, I think there's, my issue with that is there are standalone statutory board and they don't report to us. They are subject to open meetings law. They publish their agenda, they publish their meetings. But we could certainly, you know, if we wanted to do that at our meeting, we could read them.
So you're having the same meeting again?
I, I'm not saying we should. That's what I bring up.
I, one of the things we talked about when this came up the first time was we wanted to give the committees, boards and departments an opportunity to talk to us too. So you may say, we're working on this one thing and we think that the zoning should be changed or some, you know, something...
You may have an issue that you want to bring before us.
Yeah. And so it gives them an opportunity. Otherwise, you know, some of, some of these things actually are going to be no report.
Right.
Because there is nothing to report.
Yeah, so I, I would, I, I agree with you there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be a proponent of asking you to come before us and recap your meetings.
We could do that, and also we may have questions. So, and then with the minutes, we run, you know, well, what does this really mean? And that's, that's fine. I think that's an opportunity. And we could also have questions. A lot of people are very confused about what's going on with some of the things. And it'd be an opportunity to try and clarify that. I, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Michael. Kathy?
Joey, I'm amazed you didn't ask my department what we would like to report to you. Because, of course, I would love an opportunity to be able to speak to the present audience and the audience that uses via Panda about what's going on at the highway department. But the question is, and Bruce, that you brought up, raises a good one, it's are you talking about an opportunity to speak to the board? Because quite frankly, I feel I always have the opportunity to speak to the board. You've always been very gracious. And this administration and previous administrations, there's never been a problem with the highway department saying, I'd like to talk to the board about X and getting it on the agenda. So I think you need to distinguish whether you're talking about an opportunity for departments or a requirement for departments to come, they either push information or pull information. And, but to that end, if there is, if you are presenting a general opportunity is to sort of recap things, you know, as I said, the highway department certainly could, would be happy to, like, at a March meeting, run through its, you know, previous years annual report, which Alan, you were not here for when it was produced, so here's your complimentary copy.
Thank you.
I, I expect a full report back from you on that report. But so I just, I raise that question about what is it you're trying to accomplish? Is it a requirement? Is it an opportunity? I think that's a genuine question.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to introduce myself. I'm Sarah Inwood from Red Hook. But I just, looking at your list, I really think you should maybe talk to somebody from Red Hook, the town board there, you know, and just hear what they, how they do it. Not that you have to copy it, but just to hear what their experience is. But I know some of these, they, they don't, like, the dog park, for example, maybe your Rhine Cliff Memorial, it has, you know, some of these committees, they wouldn't get a report from every time, but they would at least give them the opportunity. But other ones, like, the clerk's report goes really fast. You know, it's like a minute and a half where he just rattles off numbers, you know, machine. And same with, like, the dog control, they just say, like, how many dogs were picked up. It goes really, really fast. So just, just to think about that. And, and I really think for members of the public, most of them don't really know, like, what the dog control officer does or how mu, many dogs are picking up, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I just think, I think there's a benefit to the public when you hear it at the town board meeting, because it's on Panda too.
That was our, that was our...
Well, I had something to just put on the website.
That was our intention, was to get the public more information.
But I know, like, working for the Observer too, a lot of people don't go on the websites, you know? I mean, I just think you're, you are limiting your audience if you're just gonna push everything to the web. Just, just a thought.
Does anybody want to pick this up and run with it? I've got my plate absolutely full. I know Joe and Bruce are auditing, auditing, auditing. You have two big projects, Alan and I.
I'd take it on, I'd take it on for the groups that I liaise with.
Yeah, you've got, I've, you've got to help me with this. We've got two big things to get off the ground in the next couple of weeks.
The website community.
And the tech, yeah.
Well, I mean, why can't we just put these things on the agenda? That, you know, it says first or second meeting by the month. Put them on and if there's no report, there's no report.
Yeah.
Why, why couldn't we start it that way and see how it goes?
Okay.
Does that work for you, John?
So John, you're asking me or John?
John.
John, sure.
So John, you'd have to let these people know that next meeting, this is your opportunity to talk to the board and board would likes some kind of very brief report of what you're doing.
Oh, now you're saying brief.
By the way, you gave me two copies.
Kathy raised a good question too, as far as whether it's a requirement or an opportunity. I think we need to answer that question for Kathy too. That's a good question, whether it's a requirement or an opportunity. Because there's a big difference. My understanding when this whole thing was first raised is that it would be a requirement because there was so much that the board wasn't aware of that was happening in the committees.
Well, that, that part of it is true. We wanted some accountability, we wanted some communication. The opportunity part of it was for the reporter to address the board with whatever needs they had or issues. So I think part of it's a requirement, part of it's an opportunity.
Does that answer your question, Kathy?
I don't know if it's a question, it's more a perception. I think you, you need to clearly direct when you decide what you want. It's not my question to answer. When you decide what, which perspective you have, that direction needs to be given to the departments that you want to hear.
But that was your question, right? Whether it was a requirement or an opportunity?
I'm asking, what is your vision, requirement or opportunity?
Yeah, like, I think it was requirement to give us some input, give us an opportunity to ask questions, and an opportunity for you to do the same to the board.
Elaine, do you want to work on this? Do you want to craft something, like a statement?
Um, you know, I don't know if this would be the best assignment for me because it really deals with all of these committees that I've never worked with before. So I don't know about, that's why I suggested that we, we wait before going, before they have time to absorb it. I mean, just looking at it, you know, I just have, I feel like there's probably going to be a lot of questions about it, so I, I wouldn't mind sitting on it.
Well, I think if we do a statement that says, we're inviting you to come to the town board meeting, here's your schedule, this is an opportunity for you to, you know, tell us what's going on, to speak to the public and to, you know, get any questions answered or, you know, have a dialogue with us, very brief. And I just don't want to dump it on John. Not dump, you know, not that I'm dumping it. John, you know, I think we need to craft something as a board and then I think we need to reach out. I think it's a project.
Yeah. I don't think I can take it on to the House with you though, because I work full-time and this, this looks like a big project to take on. And I just want to be careful that I don't take on something that I can't do a good job with. I'm happy to help, but I, I don't think I can take it on.
Just a question as well, because I understood this originally, that you were looking for something for the statutory boards and departments that don't have a liaison. But this list that everybody's come, I think, is very comprehensive, has departments that do have liaisons, you know, such as dog control, police has a statutory liaison in terms of, you know, the town supervisor, the transfer station, landfill. I mean, these things are, are, do have liaisons, the maintenance department. So is this the group that you want? Or were you talking originally about, again, boards and departments that have statutory head? Again, I, I, I think you just, I, I don't, I'm not yet clear, just as an audience member, of what it is that you're looking for. And I guess I'm asking you guys to define it a little more.
Okay, so I think this needs a little bit more defining. Are we going to sit on it or, or put it out to the, the ether? We have a resolution on the floor that's, to adopt this. We've discussed it. Do we want to make a motion to revise this resolution or vote on it? It's on the floor.
Well, why don't we table it for a couple of weeks so we can think about it and talk among ourselves?
I have a motion to table, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, against?
I don't care.
We will table it.
It, it, I really, this was 10 months ago?
I, I know. I think we could put it out there, but we're tabling it. We'll bring it up again at two, two meetings from now. Resolution, item number seven, resolution 2014-079, reappointment to the Conservation Advisory Board. It's Bob Donaldson. It was an oversight that we did not reappoint him, and I'd like to have a motion to do so. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Item number eight, it's resolution number 2014-080. It's a motion to schedule a special town board meeting for March 4th, 2014, at 6:30 PM. Motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a special meeting that we will be having with the Conservation Advisory Board. We're going to open the meeting with an executive session where we're going to discuss the appointment of a particular person to chair. And then we will continue the meeting to discuss the open meetings law requirement for the Conservation Advisory Board, the administration of the LWRP. And it's basically a meeting to see how the town board can support the Conservation Advisory Board, which is a new board. the Conservation Advisory Board, which is a new board. Any further discussion?
So the, the executive session starts at 6:30?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Item number nine, 2014-081, appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
For the public, we are, have met with David Sowers, who has come forth and would like to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David Sowers is appointed for a five-year term. David, thank you for volunteering. Resolution number 2014-082, appointment to the Board of Assessment Review. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For the public, we met with John Traver, who would like to serve. There's an error in this resolution, I'd like to revise it. It's a five-year term, John, not an unexpired term. It's a five-year term that would end September 30th, 2018.
This isn't Bob Pepperidge's term?
No, it's Ed Tobin's term.
Oh.
We have another seat. So John has expressed a willingness to serve on the Board of Assessment Review. It's a five-year term. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. John, thank you very much for volunteering. Resolution 2014-083, it's the resolution approving the County Shared Services Technology Grant. May I have a motion? I'm gonna make the motion. May I have a second?
Okay.
For the public, this is the grant that I think I've been working on for about a decade from the county to get our new computers. We finally got the contract, and I'm asking you to allow me to sign it. Any further discussion?
Is this a take-it-or-leave-it contract?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're gonna try to negotiate something.
This is, yeah, I've been holding my breath on this for about a year and a half, so let's sign it.
You know, the county may terminate this agreement of 10 days' notice without cause, you know, it's outrageous provision.
Well, the, let's say thank you and sign it while we can. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, I'll sign it tomorrow. So moved. Item number 12, resolution 2014-084, approving the hire of Recreation Director Chris Carey, who was here earlier. Tonight, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I assume this is within our budget?
Yes.
Well, this is, this is not. This is, we'd salaried it on an average of 20 hours a week for that amount. This, I don't know, this is going hourly.
I sent it to you for specific res-
And I sent back, I thought, I did.
Okay. Well, let's make a motion to revise this.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that is a salaried position at $20,800 per year, which equates to approximately $20 per hour, which is what this resolution is. On, on average, it's 20 hours per week, and that's-
So we're approving the 20,000 number, right?
20,800 that we have in the budget.
Okay.
Which is $20 an hour on average.
Right.
The problem with it is, is in the, in the fall, for example, there's very little work. But in the summer, she could be there 10 hours a day, seven days a week, which is way over the 20 hours. So the phrasing of this limits-
Right, no, I understand. So we're not, so-
You want to ensure that he, she gets the amount that we've budgeted and that it doesn't exceed this, okay, I see it, it's a salaried position not to exceed 20 hours a week.
Right, and if she works more than 20 hours a week, we pay that flat amount. That's what we're paying.
Bruce, would you work with John on the specific language for the resolution? I think what we have on the floor here is a motion to revise this resolution, resolve that Chris Carey is hereby appointed Recreation Director effective immediately at a salary of $20,800 per year, approx, 20 hours, 20-
No, we're getting 20 hours per week.
Can I finish, please? $20 an hour, not about 20 hours per week, not to exceed 20 hours per week.
Just the first part of it's averaging 20 hours per week.
Why do you have to get into that? Just say a point or a-
Because of civil service?
And, or part-time-
Of civil service requiring you to have an hourly rate?
No, we're not doing an hourly rate, we stopped at averaging 20 hours.
Which we believe will be, what, about 20 hours a week?
The way we've always done it is averaging 20 hours per week.
John, did you get that language? The important thing here is 20,800 per year, averaging about 20 hours per week with the, with the hourly rate, correct?
No, that's it.
That's it.
You stopped there.
Okay, stop there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So it looks like we fired Chris Carey. Thank you, Chris. Item number 13, resolution 2014-085, approving a waiver of a late fee for Vandenberg Cove sewer district payment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? I'll second it. For discussion, I received a request from a resident in Vandenberg Cove Sewer District asking for a waiver of the late fee. Residents are billed quarterly or monthly, John?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, and they have 30 days after they receive their invoice to pay, and the late fee is 10%. I have no authority to say yes or no, so I'm bringing this before you. I'm not saying that we should waive the late fee, which is how this is written, but that's what we have to vote on. So any further discussion?
I don't think it's a very good idea for a board to start getting into individual assessments and waivers. Just opens us up to charges of favoritism, and we, as far as I know, we've never done anything like this where we're getting into waiving what charges. I think it's unfair to those people who pay late charges, who didn't know that if we pass this, that they come, would come to the board. I, I think it just brings us to a slippery slope.
I agree. I wasn't saying, suggesting that we should do this. If we waive late fees, we have no way of, how do we get the money? Any further discussion?
I, I agree with Joe, and that $30 gets added onto their county taxes.
Yes.
That's how that works.
Yes.
So, but there is one other thing. The village was just audited, the water system over there, Water Department, and they were cited for doing this exact thing.
For waiving fees?
Right.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, again, wasn't proposing that we do this. I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that there was a request. So if we, I guess a no vote is, all in fav, all in favor? All against?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay? I think we're voting nay. We want a nay vote. So this resolution does not pass, John, we are not passing it. Thank you. I just want to make a note here for myself. Okay, sorry, we cannot waive late fees. Resolution 2014-086, approving the contract for the playground inspection. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Okay.
For the public, this is a yearly contract we have to inspect and maintain our playground equipment for safety. Is that accurate, Bruce?
Yes, and it protects us from-
Yes.
And we're talking about $390?
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Resolution 2014-087, appointment to the Historic Structures Committee, or Historic Preservation Committee, I believe it is. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, we, in 2009, had a Historic Structures, Historic Preservation Committee. They wrote a proposal to us. Michael, maybe you'd like to speak to this, you were on the committee.
We made it up and basically trying to develop a law, trying to address preservation of historic structures throughout the town. We did put draft law together, the village took it, they made a few changes, and they adopted it. My understanding, David Miller, who's the chairman of the County Board of Social Preservation and Historic Society, they had no problems administering it. I think the decision was made, because we're trying to do the zoning law, the weapon law, the cop and everything-
It was a little busy, it was a busy season.
That it was a time, maybe set this one aside, and, you know, wait for the other things got properly processed, and we got a little experience. So the idea now is to reinstitute this group, to just take up that draft, see if any changes need to be made, and then present it to the Town Board, and you will do what you choose to do with it.
Cool.
Thank you. We, further to the public, we have, it's a committee of eight, I believe now. We had two people not continuing and three new people who are historic homeowners who would like to get on. We're proposing that Melanie Moore is the chair. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Resolution 2014-089, approving Town Hall use application for the Boy Scouts of America. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, this is a Town Hall use application for their annual food drive. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, aye, so moved, and I hope everybody can participate. It is on March 28th and April 5th, from 9:00 to 10:00. I'm sure there'll be more information forthcoming. We have a couple of discussion items. I see you guys packing up, but it's a long one.
It's hard, actually.
Yeah, it's a little chilly in here tonight, and-
We're conserving energy. It's good.
Bring it down for me.
We have a item, a discussion item on here for the grants gateway notice. Joe, I think you put this on, would you like to talk about it?
Yeah, and maybe you can table further discussion. I thought I saw something where the state put out that something that if you want to apply for a grant, you gotta do it through a certain channel, and that this channel will notify people of the available grants. So it looked to me that we gotta put our names in to this, but I confess, I haven't read it carefully, and maybe we can discuss this again, but I think we gotta get our names in.
I think we have to register for all future state and federal grants. So I think, I have a big pile in my inbox. I'll reach out to you, Kathy, because just off the top of my head, my first reading of it, I thought we had to do it especially for FEMA money, too. Did you get that?
No.
Okay.
Is FEMA federal or state? Or administered?
Well, FEMA is, is federal money administered by the state.
And I think this may be right.
Yeah, that was my takeaway, and again, it's in my inbox.
Is that federal highway?
I'm pretty sure it's FEMA, but again, I'll, I'll break it out, I'll read it again, and we do have to register. It seemed like a central clearinghouse for all grant money.
Right, right. I think it's federal money administered by the state that runs through this portal. And maybe we individually want to register rather than the town, so we each get the notice and we can see what grants are available. That's what I didn't get, whether it's the town registering or as individuals.
I have a big, John, do you still have that application thing floating around?
It's forwarded.
Could you maybe forward it to everyone?
It's waiting.
Another forward would be helpful. Next discussion item, any further discussion on that? But I think, the Fire Protection District. Joe and Bruce worked all Saturday with the village. You guys have put a tremendous amount of work in this. I know for the public, we just got access to the county records of all the calls last week, Bruce?
Yeah, through HEAT.
Yes.
But for 2013, we haven't access yet.
Right, so we, we just have the information, we've just been able to start the process, and I know that you've both put a tremendous amount of time into it so far, so thank you. You want to bring us up to speed?
Well, Thursday, we're meeting again with them. But the only thing that we've solved so far is that mutual aid is not really something that the Detective District needs to worry about. It's, it's an obligation of the fire company. So we've narrowed that down. The basis, fundamentally, what we're doing here is discussing whether capital expenses and administrative costs and brick and mortar overhead is really to be spread across the entire Detective District and Village. We looked at the call history, we know how many times a certain fire truck went out, how many times an ambulance went out, we know all of that, we know where they went and that. We're debating whether the process needs to be auditable. If it's, if it's a service runner type of thing, then we still haven't resolved whether they really have to be there or not.
I'm sorry, say that again, I got, I lost, I got lost.
Well, there's certain things where, where the fire company is dispatched, but may, somebody else may get there first, and therefore they didn't have to actually go out. So if we're counting calls, was that really a call or not? So we're debating that right now, that, that type of thing. We, Joe and I feel we need to look at the, the three years. I think the village is under pressure to find out what we're gonna pay this year and what we would pay next year there next year, so that they can get their budget done.
Right, they have to do a budget by, have to issue the budget, I think by, what, April 1st?
The tentative one, yeah.
Really, April 1st? One of the elections?
March.
Jeez.
So that, there is pressure on us to decide what we're willing to pay for our next budget year, which is 2015, and we still haven't resolved what we should pay for 2014. So I, I think we're conceptually getting a little bit more comfortable as to what conceivably, legally could be included in what we pay. But then we have the issue of whether we should be paying for certain things like-
Capital and administrative?
It's really more administrative.
Are they, do, I mean, off the top of my head, they're setting the budget, we don't charge them administrative fees for things that we provide. I mean, I, I guess I have some, have we gotten advice of counsel, or are we just very beginning here?
Joe's gonna speak with-
Well, I have spoken to Warren as to whether we could pay for capital, and whether, I believe, we could pay for administrative costs. But the question is, on administrative costs, we don't charge the village for certain administrative costs that we have, like the salt, the sand, the administration, excuse me, of that. I think whatever we do, we have to revise the way we pay the village, so that now we're paying so much for a truck and so much for an ambulance. I think it has to be one number. That's what I'm getting. The question is, what is the number?
Well, I mean, it's almost March 1st here, we only just got access- Well, I mean, it's almost March first here, we only just got access to the information, so do you have a proposal for us? Do you have any sense of what the mutual aid calls and the questionable calls are, like any percentage?
Yeah, we, we know, I, I'd prefer not to put them on the air right now, uh, 'cause there's-
Is this appropriate for executive session, because it's a contract sort of negotiation point?
Yeah, that, that part of it is. I, there's, there's a couple other issues, one of them is taxation without representation.
That was what I was gonna say, if they're, they're buying the equipment without our approval.
Well, yeah, and, I mean, just dictating what we have to pay without, without-
Us having any say.
But we're paying, that's, there's a problem there. The other problem in my mind, and I'm a village resident, I remember, so I would benefit from this if it went the way they wanted to go.
Yes, but you're a town council person.
Yeah, I know, it, so it's, it's like I've got two heads here, um, is, no matter whether the protective district is there to lower the costs to, to the village taxpayers or not, they still need the same space, they still need the same equipment, they still need the same training, so, by saying that the town is taking advantage of the village, I, I think is a stretch, a, a big stretch. I think that's been said, and I, I'm wrestling with that right now. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think this is to be continued. I think clearly in a new contract, we have to be able to look at their budget, the, the fire department has some input in it, uh, because, uh, we will be paying a large percentage of that, the fire department, uh, budget.
And the thing, you know, I, I guess I said, I looked it up, and since nineteen ninety nine, the protective district has paid seventy-five percent of the operating expense of, of the fire department, and that, that's only the part that, that they claim on their reports to the state as being fire department, but what isn't in there is the things they're bringing up, like the heat, insurance, or, well, insurance is there, electricity, that kinda stuff, they don't, they keep that in the general fund, in the budget.
Well, it, it also doesn't include capital.
Yes, it does.
Expense, the seventy-four percent.
Well, no, that's, it, it comes out to fifty-one percent.
Right, if you put the capital in, and-
But again, that's something you'd wanna have a say.
Right.
Both in acquisition and both in disposi- and disposition.
Right.
Well, it, it just doesn't, uh, sit well with me that we are presented with a number and have to just take it. There's no leaving it. I mean, here, we wanna buy a truck, or we're buying a truck, and you will be paying X percentage of it.
Right, we, well, that's the taxation without representation.
Right.
We'll, we'll work through that on Thursday, or at least we'll try.
Right, and I, I, I think that part will change, I think the difficult part is what expenses should we be paying, uh, and, uh, I think that's basically whether the administrative and overhead expenses, is that something we should be paying or not?
I think, Alan, you have a-
So I would, I would, I'm a question, I like asking dumb questions. I just looked at my tax bill, and I, I get, part of my property tax goes to the fire district. Now, how is that different from the money that the town pays the fire districts?
We're collecting that from you.
The, the, we're wrestling with this, not on our budgetary behalf, but on the, on, for our citizens who are in the fire protection districts.
Oh, so this is not money out of the town?
No, this is money that our residents are paying for this service.
We're just talking about what the, what the per thousand.
We're representing our constituents in a, in a, in a good faith negotiation.
Are you in Rhine Cliff, or are you in protective district?
I'm in Rhine Cliff and Hillside.
So you're in the protective district?
He's in, no, he's in both districts?
I pay, I pay some to Hillside and more to Rhine Cliff.
I wonder if he straddled the district, or?
I must, 'cause they both show up.
Yeah, I don't think they-
Kind of fire won't go off.
I'll have to look it up on the tax map.
We have a map in Shelley's office, but, uh, you know, I wanna thank you two for doing this, it's really time consuming, and you also spent all day in a, a union negotiation meeting, which I think we might be getting some, um, you know, we'll discuss this further in executive session, but, uh, you've been spending a tremendous amount of time on it, and I thank, I thank you.
You, you know, if he started regular chocolate chip cookies, he'd sell a lot, he'd feel more-
I'll bake for you, Bruce, I'll bake for you, I don't have gluten in the house, but I'll buy some for you.
You like maple walnut ice cream?
Yeah.
Maple's the best.
All right. Um, we, Kathy and we'd like for you to join us, we're going to go into an executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, do I have a motion?
Correct.
And a second?
Is it the public comment is all it?
No, if, we, we can, we can absolutely come on up and address us, um, we'll give you your three minutes in the sun, Mr. Tyner.
Thank you, Joel Tyner, I'll be, uh, in three, if possible.
Joel, I prefer to keep, uh, that, you know, I know it's public comment, you're our representative, if you could talk about things, you know, for Rhine Beck, that would be great.
All right, well, one thing I've been working on for about six years unsuccessfully, but I think you might be interested in this, the, um, try to get the county government to do this, if you go to townofcourtland.com/chop, that's C-O-R-T-L-A-N-D-T, townofcourtland.com/chop. For many years, New York Times did an article about this six, seven years ago, they're saving about two hundred and fifty dollars every winter for local homeowners. Uh, there's ten heating oil delivery companies listed on that website. Uh, Dr. Richard Becker, he ran for Congress, before he ran for Congress, he's a doctor, as a member of the Courtland Town Board, he came up with this idea of promoting, uh, oil delivery companies, sort of a win-win, if they agree to, you know, cut the price of a gallon of oil by twenty-five, thirty cents. I've tried many, many times, many, many years, to get Dutchess County Government to do this. To me, it's a simple common sense no-brainer, it costs hardly nothing for the taxpayers, uh, for the town of Courtland Government. Summers and Peak Skill, there's three or four municipalities in West Jess are doing this, uh, since I represent Rhine Beck and Clinton, I'm sharing this with you folks, because I think it may be the year twenty-five, twenty-five before I can convince the power structure in Dutchess County to do this, but, um, I just urge you to go to that website, and I, I know, I have a feeling there's a few people in Rhine Beck and Clinton, I would love to see an extra two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars in our pockets, uh, every winter, so it's townofcourtland.com/chop.
C-H-O-P?
Right, uh, Courtland Heating Oil Plan.
What's, what's the population of Courtland, do you know? I mean, how big is it?
I should know that.
I used to go there with soccer, it was pretty big. The, the reason I ask is, you know, 'cause it's Costco, Botany, and a couple smaller ones, Love Efron comes through here.
Valley.
Pardon me?
Valley.
That, well, Valley's one of the smaller ones, right? And, and it's, it's, it's hard to negotiate, I, I've talked to a couple of them, 'cause you've said this before, and, and they go, "Well, if I do it for Rhine Beck, I'll have to do it for every place."
Okay.
So you're thinking it's population-driven?
Well, I belong to a mine co-op, and I, the guy, whoever, the guy that runs it does a great job for us, there's about five hundred families in it.
No, we used to be in that, we've been, um, years ago, like ten, twelve years ago, I think.
Forty-one thousand.
It's a city, it's forty, it's a city.
Forty-one thousand.
I think-
Thank you.
Sure, I think Peak Skill, Summers, Putnam Valley, and Courtland, the last time I checked, there's three or four municipalities doing, I'm just, I'm just sharing it because it frustrates me to know, and that, when the New York Times did a big article about this, uh, six years ago, and it's still not happening. I've talked to oil delivery companies locally, they're not understandably, perhaps, they're not in love with the idea. I don't represent oil companies, I represent people at home, of course, so.
This-
Yeah. The whole issue of smart meters, you know, got that resolution passed unanimously recently, uh, not as strong as the Ulsar County Legislature Resolution. Reason why I bring it up again is because there are people jazzed about this all over Rhine Beck and Clit, have been for a while, and all over the county. This coming Saturday at four P.M., at the Everready Diner, right here in Rhine Beck, uh, we're having a meeting, because people keep on pressing me and pressing me on this, what's the next step? So you're all welcome to join us this coming Saturday, four P.M. at the Everready Diner, um, the Stop and Shop in Rhine Beck. Right now, for many years, uh, there's an item pricing law in Dutchess County. There are some people who are working very, very diligently to try to remove the item pricing law in Dutchess County, so if you go to Stop and Shop or any supermarket, Hannaford's in Dutchess County, no longer, uh, can supermarkets, uh, you know, not have prices on the items without having to pay a fine, a fee, or penalty. Some of the proponents of this effort to kill the item pricing law in Dutchess County have, uh, some very notable people have spluttered expletives on me, because they know, frankly, there is, they're doing this, I'm basically the one guy in Dutchess County, I'm the main reason you lie, we still have it, because they've put this on the agenda for committee day, literally about fifteenth, fifteen times over the last two years, I blast an email out to my list in the media, and then they pull it from the agenda. Because of the election in November, there's been a new mix of legislators, there may be unfortunately some bipartisan cooperation for this. If you care about item pricing in Dutchess County, you need to get involved, 'cause I'm pretty sure there's gonna be a vote on this very soon, there's front page stuff in the Daily Tribune yesterday, um, and the UFCW, United Food and Commercial Workers, has looked at Massachusetts, Michigan, all across the country, they, the supermarkets lay people off when this happens. It's not just a consumer protection issue, they say, "Oh, well, we'll have scanners in the aisles, well, if you're sixty, seventy, I'm fifty," trying to memorize the prices of ten, twenty, thirty, forty items from the aisles to the checkout, uh, and we're talking fifty, a hundred people laid off in Dutchess County, easy, if this repealed, this legislation goes through, so. I think I wore out my three minutes, I'm at eight seven six-
Wow, thank you.
Two four eight eight, four five three two one oh five, there's another ten issues here, but, yeah.
Thank you, Joel, I love it, keep it, yay!
If anybody wants to hear of these other ten numbers.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, Joel, we're, uh, a motion to go into executive session to, uh, review our collective negotiation issues?
Will you be voting?
We will not be voting, this is for discussion only. Do you have a motion? I'll make one, a second.
Second.
Um, thank you, and good night.